Ellison, here. Peggy, here.
Okay, would everybody please stand, remove your act, and try to make the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we have before us an agenda that's in front of us. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Dr. Neemasters, her second, Mr. Wilson. All those in favor of accepting the, adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, we have the adoption of an agenda. We also have before us a content, consent agenda. This is sundry items that are typically in our board packets, the minutes and different HR things. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
The consent agenda, excuse me. So moved Ms. Peggy and the second by Mr. Wilson. This will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Neemasters?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Peggy?
Okay, we have, we also have a consent agenda. This is the part where we take public comment. There's a procedure that we like to follow. A public forum will be open for 30 minutes. Three minutes per speaker, 10 minutes per topic. No more than three speakers per topic as a general rule. Comments should be brief and on, excuse me. And those wishing to address the board shall fill out a card. There's some white ones there on the table back there. Questions may be asked on any topic, including those on the agenda. District policy and data privacy laws preclude the board from publicly discussing personnel matters or data, including information which, if discussed in the public meeting, could violate law or policy. An attempt to make an answer at questions addressed to the board, in those cases where an answer is not provided, a phone call from the appropriate school district official will be made as follow-up. With that, I have three people that would like to address the board this evening. Kathy Green. Kathy, yes ma'am. Please come up and address the board. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Kathy Green. I've grown up on Bald Eagle Avenue for, we lived here in 1960, before the school was here, and the tennis courts and everything else. And I guess I'm concerned about what kind of plan they have for the school as far as looking at our homes and taking them when we've been here for so long, and the traffic in the neighborhood. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And how they can just come in and just say, you know, we want to buy your homes, and we don't want to sell them, and we want to be here. I'm planning on living here another 30 years, as far as I'm concerned. My mom's been here 60 years, and I hope she's there another five more at 91. And I guess I just don't get it.
Dr. Kaczmarek, do you want to follow up, or do you want to answer that one? I think there's some disinformation going on out there that we should get out.
Yeah, well, we'll follow up with you. Make sure we have your contact information, but at least work with you.
Yep.
But there is no plan for the board to take homes. I'm not, I think we've communicated that, but we need to do, obviously do a better job of communicating that over and over again. If people are interested, if their property of, the butts are property, we are interested in having that conversation, but we'll do that one-on-one with individuals.
We'll judge us.
Yeah, yeah, but we're not, we're not intending to use eminent domain. So when you talk about the taking of homes, that isn't our intent.
Okay, and is there a plan for the school? I mean, is that we can see it all, or?
So we're in the early stages. Typically, in the process here, we don't have a fully designed school before we go to the election. The election allows us to then design, or a successful bond referendum allows us then to design a school. So, you know, we're moving things along as schools normally do in this situation. We're working with other governmental entities to talk about issues that you've raised, such as, such as traffic. So all that work is going on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next I have, is it Peg Vatness? Welcome.
Mr. Chair and ladies, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Peg Vatness. I'm here today to discuss the facilities planning recommendations and request action by this board. The issues the boards are trying, the board is trying to address regarding projected growth in enrollment and facilities maintenance are real and they are urgent. In most respects, we support the process that was undertaken to determine solutions. However, it has proven to be incomplete. When an option that was moving to the top of the list of recommendations involved acquiring homes and breaking up a long-established neighborhood, we believe the need for this should have been questioned. The cost estimate documented dated 4/4/2019 and presented to this board identifies $6 million earmarked for the purchase of 21 homes. As far as we know or can discern from the information online, questions were not greatest about the true need for inclusion of our homes in the option two plan. The fact that they were included was never documented as a con in the pros and cons information presented to the board. Regarding the committee's charge, how does the recommendation of an option that includes the acquisition of people's homes reflect the values and priorities of the communities of the White Bear Lake schools? At the neighborhood chat that was held on May 16th, we were told option two plan would proceed without acquisition, could proceed without the acquisition of any homes. We have also been told that this board does not want to use the power of eminent domain. As of today, it is still not clear to us which homes will truly be affected. We have heard the homes adjacent to the north campus and the central school district office buildings, on the east side of Bald Eagle and the west side of Division. However, we have also heard of the desire to acquire homes that were located between Lincoln Elementary and Price Field. Will our neighborhood become a patchwork of privately owned homes and rental properties or vacant lots as the school district implements these plans? If the possibility of the acquisition of homes remains in the planning process, our future remains uncertain, and we will continue to lose sleep due to the loss of security provided by our family homes. Our land is part of our family legacy. Our home was built by my father using teams of horses to dig the base in 1949. It is our desire to pass this land and our legacy on to future generations. Without your action to protect us, we will not have the security of knowing this will be possible. We respectfully request, we truly consider the impacts on our neighborhood and the families that have lived and supported the White Bear Lake community since the very beginning of White Bear Lake. We are asking that the school board directly, facilities planning committee, to remove and do not include the homes located between Lincoln School and Price Field from any further planning documentation recommendations. I can only speak for our properties, I don't know about the other homes. We are also asking that the board pass a resolution stating that eminent domain will not be used to acquire the homes identified in the plans. As you know, I trust the integrity of this board. As they say, they do not want to use an eminent domain. But you will not be here. This will not be the board for the next 10 years while this plan is being implemented. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, no, I mean, we definitely will respect your comment, respect what you had to say. I'll tell you that, and I'm just going to speak, that this board has said that they're, no, there is no plan for us to, actually, I'm going to speak for myself and say that, and actually, the whole board has said that they don't have any interest in using eminent domain. But I can't tell you what future boards are going to do, and I can't pass something that, for a future board, that's not for us to do. We can only tell you what our plan is. And from our understanding, like Dr. Kaczmarek said, is that there is no plan. I mean, we have, we have enough space right now in North Campus. If everything were to move forward, we have enough space to build the addition and make it a high school. I haven't heard anything about acquiring houses in between Lincoln and Price Field. That hasn't been anything that's come across that I've heard. Is there anything to that conversation?
Conversation there was to expand green space at Lincoln Elementary that would also serve this site. That was the conversation.
So my request would be that that would be off the table. And I believe, I don't know, but I totally believe you would have the power to do that.
Well, and like Dr. Kaczmarek, if you want to answer again, just say that you want to talk about that. We're still at the beginning stages of the planning. Tonight, the vote is on the agenda this evening as to send the plan to for a bond levy, a bond levy. That's the plan.
All right. I, I.
I hear your passion. I definitely hear what you have to say. And I don't think that nobody's discounting that. I'm just telling you where we've been in those conversations in our work studies and in our board meetings, and have had conversation for the recommendations that have come back.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mary Ryan? You guys all have your lights on.
My name is Mary Ryan, I'm Peggy's sister, and the property is for you, because I saw it last night. And I just feel like, you know, you say that this isn't going to be the way it goes, but we got letters with our names on them that would indicate to us that our property was what's involved. So that's why we've been coming to these meetings. And it feels like you're going to suggest that the people vote on something without being aware that people's homes may be taken and may not want, when your home is one of the targeted homes, doesn't feel enough to us to be able to rest at ease and feel that we can say they told us it wouldn't happen. And so it, like Peggy said, it feels like it can't be on there. Because unless every time something comes up, we come here to speak about it, who will know what our feelings are? And one of the things that I'm disappointed is, we went to you, Dr. K, and had a one-hour meeting, and it felt like, and when you called us tonight, you heard very little of what we said. And, and so I just, I don't know where we go from here to try to figure out that was to be our retirement home. We retired on the basis that we were going to live there. And that certainly would make a big difference to us if that, we hang on for how many years trying to figure out is that going to work out for us? So I just wanted to say what I had to say, and I think my sister said it well, so. Thank you.
Is there more, or say you want to? Joe, is it Rimley?
Correct, Joe Rimley. Well, I know a few of the board members, and I was on the strategic planning team two summers ago. And the plans look good, I don't have any issue with that. But I would like to make one pitch that we talked about quite a bit in the strategic planning teams. And that is an emphasis on parental involvement. The education system, the teachers, the structures, all those things are excellent. But the key to education from my limited viewpoint is parental involvement. Any way that that can be stressed, encouraged, made to believe that it is the number one factor in a child's success in education, the buildings will mean nothing if the kids don't grasp or have a sense that it's important. The other is a phrase I've been hearing a lot is a balanced education. And the more I think about it, if I talk to a science teacher, an English teacher, a history teacher, what is balance? You know, a sociology teacher or an administrator? The concept will take on different definitions. And I'd kind of like to know that you all said in a forum just amongst yourselves, try to ferret out, what does it mean to have a balanced education? Is it an equal amount of English, science, history? Or is it geopolitical maybe? Is it issues that maybe personally we're not comfortable with, but other people are? I was tickled to death, I almost cried, when you started your meeting tonight with the pledge allegiance, when in some communities, you know, it's said it's disrespectful. I mean, jeez, I wanted to applaud you for doing that, so. Good job, you know, good job.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay. Dr. Kaczmarek, I'd just like for you to follow up with Ms. Vatness and Mrs. Ryan again, to talk through some of their concerns to make sure. And then if you could give that information back to the board, I appreciate it.
And there will be additional comments later in the presentation to talk about the facilities planning.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move into our first informational item, C1, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. K? I don't want to say that we have a screen up there, because I don't know.
I'm going to use this time, if it's all right, to get the screen up. But.
All right, I will give the update here. Yeah. So, Market Fest, we've had terrific conversations at the district's Market Fest booth this summer, that there are more chances to see us in action. Be sure to stop by the district's booth on Thursdays through July 25th. So two more opportunities down at White Bear Lake to receive a free pencil and bear paw temporary tattoo and to engage in conversation. Summer activities, so while swiveling out for the summer, our district is still busy with programs this summer, extended day and flex to summer school, to activities, camps, and everything in between. Thank you to our students, parents, and staff members who keep our buildings hopping year-round. The foundation golf outing, so thank you to the sponsors, organizers, and participants. Sold-out roster of all 144 golfers. White Bear Lake area educational foundations 20th annual golf outing. Thanks to those who were there for all the support of our district. Very much appreciated. And we recently received word that we received national level awards for six of our district publications. We received an award of excellence for our 2018-19 activities calendar. Awards of merit for our 2018 annual update to the community. Back-to-school bears Facebook challenge contest. Early childhood program, Where Bears Begin video. An honorable mention, accolades for our middle school program video. Communications projects such as these help us keep our community informed about the great things happening in our school and programs. So additional information can be found at the district website,
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move into our first discussion item, D1, which is the review of the Minnesota State High School League. Are we going to be able to play it? Why would we play training video?
I wonder, I wonder if we should take, I wonder if we should take the time tonight, or we should send it out to you, and have you read it on your own instead of just giving them a late start tonight.
Why don't you send us the link?
We'll still, we'll still act on the resolution year-round, but we'll send this up to you. And the expectations of your watching, and your obligations are board.
Okay.
And it'll be on the board packet for the community to see.
Sure, yeah.
If we can put the link on the activities page for public, if the public would like to watch the video, it'll be available on our Facebook activities page.
Okay.
So if that, if that works.
So then we'll move into our second discussion item, the overview of the comprehensive facilities plan. Is that it? Dr. Kaczmarek?
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, and the board. All right, so, so tonight we're at a critical point in our facilities planning. We've been bringing you along, school board, every step along the way as our community has done its work, and as the committee is making progress. And ultimately, they made a recommendation to you back in April. So tonight, we're going to review all the key information leading up to that recommendation, and then I'm going to be asked whether or not to put this on, this bond request number 55 ballot for a bond referendum. All right, first of all, our driving factors, I will review those again. This presentation is very similar to what was done at the work study meeting in late June. Again, I think it's important that we take the time to review the process and how we ended up where we are. So the driving factors, first of all, the strategic plan. Strategy six specifically. We will ensure learning environments enhance students' educational experience. And then within that, strategy specific result five, we will have innovative learning environments that are forward-thinking and future-ready. And these are the, these are the items that we talked about before we launched our process. So we learned about enrollments over the last few years, actually. We've had a couple of different studies done. And we know, we're expecting that enrollment will approach 11,000 students in the next decade. And we are seeing that enrollment tick up each year. Safety and security is an important reason, was an important reason for us to begin our facilities planning process. Continued investment is needed as best practices evolve in safety and security. We need to replace older systems, and we need to enhance our secure entrances at several sites. We have aging facilities, and we have deferred maintenance needs. Our buildings average about 50 years old, and we have an aging infrastructure as well. So, future of educational programming, first of all, this was also included in our strategic plan, strategy one. We will ensure that each student is the primary agent in our learning. And within strategy one, specific result one, learners have choice and flexibility to master rigorous content and skills in the time, place, and manner which best fits their academic and personal goals. More generally, over the past several years, there's a demand to create more opportunities for collaboration and student engagement. Buildings designed 50 and 60 years ago were not built with this expectation. Our staff and families continue to ask, continue to ask for more opportunities for students to collaborate, and our facilities lack the flexibility to create plentiful opportunities for collaboration and enrollment. So all of these factors led us to the point at which you commissioned a committee of staff and community members to develop, to develop a recommendation. The facility planning committee's charge was to develop a comprehensive, long-range facilities master plan with one or more scenarios for recommendation at the school board that would best serve the school district's educational goals. I'll talk a little bit about that in the slide. It would be financially attainable and sustainable. Reflect the values and priorities of the communities of White Bear Lake area schools. It would accommodate the district's pre-teen through 12 enrollments and other programs. Cover anticipated needs for the next 10 years as well as recognize major issues beyond 10 years. Be consistent with the school district's strategic vision. And that there would be a recommendation of optimal use of facilities to accommodate projected enrollment and support for educational delivery along with rationale for the recommendations. So the process, we selected a committee after, after the September meeting, and we launched that committee work in October. We worked for seven months with 90 community and staff members. We had over 10 committee meetings. There were three subcommittees along with this larger group. And ultimately, that, the committee arrived at one comprehensive plan. They reached agreement. Every member of the committee that was present at the final meeting agreed that this was the plan that should move forward to the school board. And it did that in April. So the recommendation, again, the school board is very familiar with it, but I will run through it here as we contemplate our next move. So the recommendation, district-wide additions and renovations to accommodate projected enrollment growth. Safety and security improvements and deferred maintenance projects at all district facilities. A new K-5 elementary school being built in Hugo. Onika Elementary becoming a K-5 elementary school, and Hugo Elementary becoming a northern early childhood location. North Campus would receive an addition to allow it to become the site of a single 9 through 12 high school. Sunrise Park would move to the current South Campus location. The current Sunrise Park Middle School would become the site for the senior center and early childhood programs that are currently housed at Normandy Park. Transition Education Center, which is currently located in leased space in Hugo, and the district office would also move to Sunrise Park for the school. Central Middle School would expand to take over the current district center building. And district-wide classroom and building updates to create flexible learning spaces is also part of the plan. So a couple of, I'm going to pause and just make a couple more comments. First of all, a key feature of this plan, so we are committing to using almost all of our existing square footage and build new only where needed. So the only facility that would be, that we have discussed taking offline at this point is Normandy Park. And we'd be able to do that by moving into, moving those programs in the Sunrise. Otherwise, we would be using all of our square footage. So this, this plan is, is practical from that standpoint. And then a couple of things, I'll, first of all, just thinking that district center, there's still, there's still talk about district center potentially being raised down the road. And I want to, again, state publicly that district center is an historic and beloved building, and the board's committed to keeping it. Again, we've had conversations about that. So under the proposal, Central Middle School would take over the entire building, would take over this entire building, and district offices would move elsewhere. Students would once again fill the halls of our oldest and most historic building. So again, there is no plan in place to tear down District Center. And then regarding some of the comments earlier tonight, and then just the, the plan around North Campus here. So while the district would welcome gaining more land near North Campus, the high school plan can absolutely be completed on its current site without any additional land. And the district has no intention of using eminent domain to acquire this school land. We have coexisted with our neighbors for all of these years, and we intend to continue doing so. We want to work with our neighbors if they want to sell their property. And if they don't want to sell their property, we want to work with them to ensure some transition into what the future will hold for the neighborhood. As we courageously build our future, which is part of our mission statement, we must strike a balance with honoring our legacy. Again, that's part of our mission statement. We want to support our neighbors throughout this process. The neighborhood is part of our rich legacy, as we referred earlier. And we intend for it to be part of our future as well. So again, to reiterate, respectfully, Chair Mullen said that the board can't tie the hands of future boards. However, you've all made it very clear that we have no intent of using eminent domain as part of this plan. And I think as long as any of us are around, I mean, that is something we will, we will work to hold other boards to that standard as well. So I don't know if we want to pause there, or if we should keep going.
Ask, ask questions, is there any questions? I have one. Can you just tell me, as far as the committee's work? Because the committee has come back to us, and I remember seeing the 21 house number. Is there a reason that they came at 21, and what was the reason for it?
Yeah, it was a number that was discussed. I don't, I don't think there's a number that's, I know it appeared in documents, but it could be far fewer, it could be more. I think it depends on, I don't know, if you, so I have to explain it. If you, if you take a look at the property and any, any other property that's touching ours, we would be interested in having a conversation about that. And there are properties that are, would be of greater importance to have in terms of improvement in sight than others. So I think there's, I think there's danger in publishing a list of homes. I think generally, the, if a home is touching our property, we're interested in having a conversation. Some of them we may not necessarily want to open, but others we definitely would. So we invited people in the area. We did, we did take a look at the property across Bald Eagle and the Lincoln Block to potentially expand green space. potentially expand green space. Again, I would suggest that those are much lower priority than other homes in terms of acquiring for this plan to be able to be implemented. But our attempt, and again, perhaps we could have done things differently, but our attempt was to be open with our neighbors and to invite that conversation fairly early in the process. So that was our attempt. Whether or not that's how we see it in the next, the perception is reality. And so we've heard tonight that that's been frustration for us and our neighbors.
Also, I believe that, is it the city of White Bear Lake that is doing the traffic study and can you give us a?
No, we have, we contracted with a firm to do that. We're working with the city, it's our stuff, it's our project.
Tell me where we're at with that?
It's just underway.
Just started? Turn it off. Turn it off.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I, you know, with regard to the housing issue, we've already heard many times, as we all have, that the plan could work without the acquisition of any additional properties. And we've heard many times that we'd love to get the properties in the district's possession for as many of the homeowners that would be willing to sell. But what I haven't heard is what happens when you get a split. Let's say you have 11 homeowners wanting to sell and the other didn't. Now, is that number going to be draft the plans or the grounds or what's going to happen?
I think there becomes a longer-term plan as well. So we would, again, acquire over the next couple of decades, perhaps, we'd acquire homes as they become available. So we design, we design with what we know. And if we know we have certain properties, we would design for that. And we make the time of work with what we know at the time.
Ms. Polloy.
I just have an overall comment, just from, coming from the north, I truly appreciated the way the plan came together so that it became central as the center point for the high school since, coming from the north, it's 25 minutes door-to-door for, you know, your 16, 17-year-old to drive to high school in the winters here. That can be pretty scary just when they're driving the gentle, but the winter it's even worse. And I know that it were landlocked in White Bear, there isn't open land to purchase and the only other place you could purchase was in Hugo. Well, then you'd have the south end of town, not happy about that because then you're reversing the process. So I completely understand everybody's frustration and level of anxiety over it. But I truly think that those 90 individuals really took into consideration what was best for the entire district. And I know that's got to be frustrating for some, but I, as a board, we have all had conversations where eminent domain is not what we intend. We're looking at this five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years out and everything can still go through without purchasing anybody's home. So I think it's a good, it's a good way to keep both ends of the school district happy and still be able to make the school district better than it ever was.
Ms. Fahy.
And I'd just like to tag on to Mrs. Polloy's comments. In terms of looking at all the time committee spent and the discussions they had, you know, we could have opted to tear everything down and build something completely new, but they're being financially responsible with using an existing building that is in the center of the district to accommodate students from the north, students from the south, and students from east and west that are coming. And if you look at the plan, the thing that, when I looked at it, I thought, okay, this is a really fair plan because it impacts every single building in the district. We're not going to end up with the haves and the have-nots. It's going to impact every single building in the district, therefore, impact every single student and family in this district with facilities that will accommodate changing education as we move on 10, 20, 30, 40 years. So there are compromises and I know that the discussions that we've had, and it's been said time and time again, but I know there are, there is always going to be misinformation floating around that this board is not interested in using eminent domain and we can do this without acquiring any houses. But as Dr. Kasmatik explains, to be completely open, we, the committee talked about, well, this may be a possibility. So instead of us going for a bond referendum and passing that and then saying, oh, by the way, we're not doing that, we're being totally open upfront. So I would hope that our community for the education of all the students in our community would support this. But I do understand the anxiety. I do understand that. And we just need to keep having the conversations and people asking questions. And I know I responded to questions with, please see the district website for the accurate information because on social media, there's a lot of stuff floating around out there that is just not accurate.
Any other questions, comments?
So I'm not done with my.
I understand.
So there'll be other opportunities to.
If we're chopping it.
There might be other, if you previewed, there might be other topics you might talk about. And then when we, later in the meeting, we'll have an opportunity again to talk through any of the issues before you actually, or on a resolution to call the election as well. So I'll continue. So the next slide is, it's difficult to, it's difficult to read and we debate whether or not we should even include it at this point, but for the visual learner, maybe you'll like this. But essentially, it lays out a concept of the flexible phasing of the plan. Again, it's a concept at this point. All the boxes represent the building. And see how it maps out over the next five years or so, could potentially extend into a sixth year depending on, depending on how the high school would be approached. But again, I'm not going to go through each of these items, but this is an example of a document that's available and I'd be happy to spend time with anybody to explain this. Essentially, it's a five-year plan as it's laid out here. So the whys, you know, why are we here today? Why are we recommending the plan or why is the plan better recommended as it is? It's to accommodate our projected enrollment growth, provide safe, secure, and healthy learning environments for all students through investments in our energy facilities and infrastructure. Increased opportunities for students through a single 9 through 12 high school experience, create flexibly designed learning spaces to support student-centered instruction. And the last bullet in particular is in the safe and secure, healthy learning environments and investment in energy facilities and the net flexibly designed learning spaces truly will impact all of our facilities. So the recommendation before you is that we would offer a bond referendum here this November, November 5th, 2019. We would ask voters to approve a $326 million bond, which would fund space for our growing enrollment, it would improve our school safety and security, address our deferred maintenance needs, and update classrooms for more flexible learning spaces. We've talked about the tax impact and an average homeowner would be $23 a month. We discussed the ballot language at our last board meeting. The ballot language remains unchanged.
I, in our first conference.
Is it about tax impact?
Yes.
We have a slide coming up. So we'll be, we'll be more information on that. So board members, we had talked about the ballot language and we landed on, yes, it was even as it is. It's a comprehensive question, although, you know, we certainly could have made it longer, leave it or not. But we wanted to capture the key parts of the plan in the ballot question so that people who are making a decision on election day would, even at that point, would have access to information now to make a decision. So again, our bond attorney helps us with this work. This is where he's landed and we did work with him to fine-tune the language with this is where it is and the plans are changed from the work session on June 27. All right, estimate the tax impact.
Hold on a second, let's get through this and then we'll.
Yep.
I'll open it up to push.
Okay, so tax impact, this is a graphic that was shown again in the June 27th work study meeting. We highlighted the $275,000 as our, that's the average value of a home in our school district. So that's the, that's the tax impact that I referenced on the earlier slide. And there are different types of properties highlighted here as well with the annual and monthly tax impact indicated.
I just thought maybe it was important, because $326 million sounds like a huge number and it is. And I think it's important to explain why, I say, for a $275,000 house, it's only going up $23 a month as opposed to $50, $70 a month or something.
So we have, we have debt that's expiring over the next few years and so that creates the ability for us to ask for an amount that would essentially replace expiring debt so that the tax impact remains, there's an increase, but the increase is much less dramatic than would be if we didn't have the expiring debt in the books. We're one of the, in terms of metropolitan districts per people basis, we have a very low debt load, so we compare favorably in that regard. Some of our neighbors have gone out for half of the amount or so for a bond referendum and the tax impact has been greater than what we've seen here. So we're positioned favorably to do something significant now to address our needs, some of them, I think you could classify as generation needs, that would set us up quite well for the next several generations, others, other need, and just again, so we have that opportunity in part because we manage our debt quite well.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, when we advanced the slides to this one, I noticed that there were still quite a few eyes reading through the ballot language and I saw a couple cameras. Did Ed, for the benefit of the audience, did everyone get to read the full wording on the ballot to your satisfaction? Just wanted to make sure you did.
And is the ballot question up on the district website also?
It's in the board packet.
It's in the board packet.
And it's in the resolution that will be, will be asked to act upon here shortly.
So will be public record as of this evening. Other questions, comments?
And it was part of the June 27 discussion as well, so it's been up there.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I haven't got, I haven't got.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So included, when you, when you go for a bond referendum, you're required to submit to the Minnesota Department of Education an act called Review and Comment Submission. That, again, is something that you've seen electronically, it is part of this board packet, that's why it's such a lengthy board packet. It's over 500 pages, probably some sort of a record for us. But this particular document is well over 300 pages. So this, again, depending on how, where we land tonight, this would be submitted to the Department of Education tomorrow for the commissioner to review. All right, there was a question at the last board meeting, what if the bond doesn't pass? And I think that's a fair question and I think we want to be open about that and upfront about that. Our projected enrollment growth would ultimately lead to overcrowding at schools, so we would have higher class sizes. There would be insufficient space for educational and community programs. We're already tight in many of these areas, obviously, as we've discussed. Some of the critical safety and security and maintenance needs would be unaddressed. Our current split campus high school would continue for the foreseeable future unless we were again to come back with a different plan or a modified plan or perhaps the same plan to ask our voters once again. And our learning spaces would not receive updates to support student-centered instruction. So we would, again, we would be operating in buildings and classrooms that were designed decades ago and education has changed and so we would be, we would still be using those spaces. So in summary, on November 5th, 2019, would be an election. We would ask voters to approve this $326 million bond to provide space for our growing enrollment, to improve school safety and security, to address deferred maintenance needs, update classrooms for more flexible learning spaces, and again, the tax impact we just discussed. So that's the plan. Next steps, tonight, you will be asked to take action on a bond referendum resolution. Our Review and Comment will be submitted tomorrow. District informational campaign will begin, leading up to election day on November 5th. So we have complete information on the district's website and that is, again, that's where you can find the most current information. And that will be, information will be added throughout the informational campaign and that's a, that'll be a great source of information for our community.
Question, questions, concerns? Mr. Chadwell.
Dr. Kasmatik, check the little thing of those that are in the audience here tonight and those that will be viewing this meeting later. Could you just explain what the, what the purpose, what the land would be purpose for of the homes that the district would purchase so that everybody has an idea of what the intent would be for that extra land?
Yeah, the land will allow us to create the ball fields and green space that we need and also to ensure we have adequate parking. But the actual footprint of the building, community, package development, all of that. This would be to improve big site improvements, access to the site, and then many of these for students on the site.
And it's my understanding that at least for the foreseeable future, for the next several years, for example, the stadium, high school stadium is going to remain down at what is now South Campus, correct?
Right, stadium.
And so this, as the land became available, it would allow potentially for that to move.
Potentially for the stadium to be out. But we'll need, you know, we'll need an all-weather tractor, for example. There'll be, there'll be a priority, there'll be space to do that. Again, if we can acquire more property, we'd be able to accomplish those things more readily.
I just wanted to address that because some folks may be wondering, we say that we've got enough land to build what we need to do with the facility itself. You know, there might be some curiosity as to why we would be looking at additional land, so just wanted to kind of address that issue.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Dr. Neemaster.
I just want to comment and I know a lot of people out here probably were in one of the many committees that met the last two years. And I was on a committee, started over two years ago and couldn't believe the dedication the community had to keep coming night after night, not just for two hours, half the time for three. You got homework to take home and people research things. I mean, this was a really impressive group that I saw working and it was transparent. I mean, everything's available. And I also thought, I mean, I'm a coupon clipper and I liked the fact that this was the White Bear approach. And we didn't look at any other district. We designed our plan that fits us as best it can without knocking things down or having to build a Taj Mahal. We're going to have the possibility of some really great spaces spread throughout the district. And I just don't think in my, what, 45, 47 years of being, participating in this district and my kids graduated from here, I've never seen anything with that many people involved. So it's a good thing. I mean, we still might not agree, but the committees that were there had to agree. That was, that was the deal. You couldn't come up with anything until everybody agreed and had a consensus. So, you know, it was pretty darn impressive and I like the fact that we didn't think we had to have the biggest new building in the metro. So we've got a good system and it's going to be a whole lot better. Or I don't know for both the kids, but the people. better, or I don't know, for both the kids, but the people that participated did a great job.
Other questions? Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to acknowledge the complexity of this, which just goes along with what several of my fellow board members are saying, and whenever people ask me about how it is to serve on the school board, I always say that every single meeting I learn more about what I don't know. And, you know, as a mom of elementary school kids, I tend to get focused on what I know, which is elementary school in the one building, and reading this 500-page document, reviewing all this information, it's been an incredibly complex process, down to we need to buy a freezer for this elementary school, things that I would never considered had to be done. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and the work that has been done by the community, by the cabinet, by the people who've served on these committees, to make this happen for, for those of us who have a slice of this district, but we have to put all the slices together to make the full pie, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to our first operational item, E1, action on the 10-year-long, 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Chair Wall?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Caspercheck. The long-term facilities program was established by the legislature in 2015, and it was to combine three existing funding programs for health and safety as long as facilities maintenance. And the state of Minnesota does not provide money to school districts and communities for maintenance of their facilities, and so it's a school, this, school board's responsibility to, to use one of two strategies for funding facilities maintenance. One is a pay-as-you-go strategy, and that's a dollar amount that's included on the annual levy, and creates a fixed amount that schools can use annually to maintain buildings. We have a $2 million pay-as-you-go levy in place right now, and that will continue. The second strategy that school boards can use to fund facilities maintenance is to sell LTFM bonds. In 2018, you sold, school districts sold 16.1 million for projects. When, when school boards sell bonds for LTFM, it's to take care of significant projects, roofs, windows, parking lots, HVAC systems, those kinds of things that can be very expensive. So each year, we're required to submit to MDE a 10-year plan for revenue and expenditures for long-term facilities, means we, it's kind of a living document, because every year we update it, change it, and bring it back to the board, and we submit it at the end of July every year. So we've included the long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan in the board packet, and our recommendation is that the board approve that tonight.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to do so? Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Wilson. This will require a roll, is there any discussion regarding the maintenance? Sorry. Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. With that, we're going to take 30 seconds.
10 minutes.
You've got five more minutes? All right, then we'll move on to our next operational item, action on the designated identified official with the authority for the MDE external user access recertification system. Is this you, Dr.?
So this is an annual approval, this is just to comply with the state access control security standard, so the superintendent is typically the identified official with authority in school districts, and just a little bit allow, grant others access to the department website.
Okay.
The only difference this year, I don't know, Jody Bieber is being added to add her new names, only she's not approving, but she will help with the administration on that, and that's why it's a little bit different this year with the signature and the board, but MDE will then recognize Jody is also a user, will assist with the facilitation of the requests that come up.
So you've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Is this roll? Any discussion regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, we, we will move on, we'll move on to operational item E3, action on the 2019-2020 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
This is just, as you described it, and every year we have to approve our membership, so that's the action to be taken here. And again, we'll follow up with the video that you're going to watch earlier, I'll get that out to you.
And I believe there is a resolution for this that needs to be read, let's get the, should we, we should get a motion on the, motion in a second before we read the resolution? Perfect, go ahead. No, go ahead.
And I just want to, there are four resolutions tonight, and if anyone's following along in the board packet, there, I read the parts that pertain directly to the resolution, you'll see with the two that pertain to elections, there are a lot of instructions to the clerk, but from the very last thing I read, you'll see that because we contract with Ramsey County, that does not pertain, so if you're wondering why I don't read anything, I just want to make that clear. Okay, first one, resolve that the governing board of school district number 624, County of Ramsey, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events, referred to in Minnesota statutes, section 128C.01, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as by, or by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved, that White Bear Lake area high school is authorized by this governing board of said school district to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolved, that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league, and all amendments thereto, as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district, or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board.
You've heard, you've heard the resolution, is there a motion to do so? So a motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster, any discussion regarding the resolution? Ms. Belloy?
Who is the designated school board member this past year?
Mr. Wilson. Any other questions, comments, concerns? That being said, this will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Okay, we have, we passed the, we are members again, renewed our membership into the Minnesota High School, or Minnesota, man, if I can speak tonight.
State High School.
State High School League. Great, 30 seconds.
At all school district facilities, the construction of additions and renovations to current district elementary schools, the construction of additions and renovations to the high school block campus to convert that site and facility for use of its grades nine through 12, single-site high school facility, the construction of renovations to the high school south campus to convert it for use as a middle school facility, the construction of renovations to the Sunrise Park Middle School facility to convert it for uses to include a senior citizen center, an early childhood center, the transition education center, and the district office, and the construction of renovations to the current district center building to allow for expansion of the central middle school facility. The question on borrowing, borrowing of funds for those purposes shall be, school district question one on the school district ballot at the special election held to authorize borrowing. Two, the actions of the administration in consulting with the Minnesota Department of Education, causing a proposal to be prepared for submission on behalf of the board to the Commissioner of Education for the Commissioner's review and comment, and taking such other actions as necessary to comply with provisions of Minnesota statutes, section 123B.71, as amended, are hereby ratified and approved in all respects. The actual holding of the special election on school district question one specified herein shall be contingent upon the receipt of a positive review and comment from the Commissioner of Education on the projects included in that question. The ballot question shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. This date is a uniform election date specified in Minnesota statutes, section 205A.11. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 205A.11, the school district polling places and precincts served by those polling places, as previously established and designated by school board resolution, are hereby designated for this special election. Pursuant to agreement with Ramsey County, Ramsey County Elections is authorized to carry out all duties and functions of the school district clerk applicable to this special election.
You, and we've got a motion and a second regarding the, regarding the resolution, is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
The resolution passes, we will be, actually, related to election of school board members, calling the, calling the school district general election on November 5th, 2019. We'd like to move a resolution to pass as presented. Okay, you've heard the recommendation, what we'll do is we'll have Ms. Fahy, whenever she's ready, start reading again.
Okay, I am ready. Okay, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 624, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, A, it is necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each. B, the clerk shall include on the general election ballot the names of the individuals who filed or have filed affidavits of candidacy during the period established for filing such affidavits, as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who filed timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. Two, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, the 5th day of November, 2018, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. For those voters residing in the city of Lionel Lakes, the city of Maplewood, and the city of White Bear Lake, the school district's general election will be held in conjunction with these cities' municipal elections. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 205A.11, the school district polling places and precincts served by those polling places, as previously established and designated by school board resolution for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election, are hereby designated for this general election. However, because the city of Lionel Lakes, the city of Maplewood, and the city of White Bear Lake will be holding their respective municipal elections on November 5th, 2019, the polling places for voters residing in the precincts in most cities shall be the polling places designated by those cities. Pursuant to agreement with Ramsey County, Ramsey County Elections is authorized to carry out all duties and functions of the school district clerk applicable to this general election.
So you've heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote for this.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Mullen. The next is operational item E6, which is, which is the action on changing the polling location for White Bear Township, or, excuse me, in White Bear Township.
So we have a resolution, before you could ask the facts from Ramsey County, just approving the location change for White Bear Township Precinct E2, from Eagle Brook Church to Lake Shore Players Theater due to construction of Eagle Brook Church.
Is this also a resolution we need to avoid? Nonetheless, we're good, she'll let her catch her breath.
Yep, so we just recommend that you also approve this resolution as presented.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. Fahy.
Okay, last one. Resolution, ah, resolution changing the location of a polling place for election held by the school district 2019, whereas on December 18th, 2018, the district established polling places and combined polling places for school district elections held during the calendar year 2019, and whereas Eagle Brook Church was designated as a polling place to serve all territory in independent school district number 624, located in White Bear Township, precinct two, Ramsey County, Minnesota, and whereas Eagle Brook Church has become unavailable to serve as polling place for the district's election, and whereas Minnesota statutes, section 204B.16, authorizes the change in polling place that was approved before December 31st, 2018, if the polling place is not available. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 624, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, the polling place for all territory in independent school district number 624, located in White Bear Township Precinct, two, Ramsey County, Minnesota, is hereby changed for elections held in 2019 from Eagle Brook Church to Lake Shore Players Theater, 4941 Long Avenue, White Bear Lake, Minnesota. Two, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 204B.16, subdivision 1A, the district shall send a notice of change in this polling place location to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the precinct. The notice should be sent at least 25 days before the next election by non-forewordable mail stating the location of the new polling place. Amen.
You've heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy, is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Dr. Newmaster?
Just one question, and I'm a Lake Shore Players Theater supporter, but I wonder how many people will have it confused with the old building unless the new name is included in that description? And, yeah, because if you hear Lake Shore Players, and you're old like I am, you'll go downtown to the old church and knock on the door, and nobody will be there, so I think we have to make sure we've got the new name as we send out all these notifications, and I'm not sure what the legal end of that is, but it sure wouldn't have directed me to the new one.
The address is there.
I know it is, and I did Google it just in case, and so I realized that the address is there, but how many people really do that? That's, I'm just talking clarity.
Mr. Mullen, you had the address listed on there, as Fahy said, no connect with Ramsey County officials, as we said, not the notice for us, and just bring their attention, there could be some possible confusion, we can, if there's a way to put it in the animal reformer at Lake Shore Players Theater.
Right.
This will require roll call vote also.
Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Fay. Aye.
All right, the motion passes and moves out the resolution. With that, we will get into our last operational item, E7, which is the second reading of the action on the school board policies. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 504, school dress and appearance. Policy 506, White Bear Lake area school district student discipline policy. Policy 525, violence prevention. Policy 611, homeschooling. And policy 802, depositing of disposition. Yep, I can read today. Thanks. You've heard the policies. Is there a motion to adopt the policies? Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Any discussion regarding the policies? These are all coming up for a second reading. So with that, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Policies are adopted. This is a portion of the meeting where we will open it up for board forum. Anything board members would like to bring forward to the community. Seeing none, this is the portion of the meeting where we will go into closed section, closed study session regarding negotiations, closed study session. This portion of the meeting will be closed to consider strategies for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies and developments and discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to Minnesota statute 179a01 to 179a25. I think we will, I'll get a motion to adjourn, and we can go upstairs in 201, in five minutes. So would ask for a motion to do so.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn the general board meeting and move to a negotiating, uh, closed session.
And there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We adjourn.